We're going to call the meeting to the order of the Radnor Township School Board on Tuesday, January 30th, and we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome, everybody. With a report on executive session, the board met in executive session on Tuesday, January 9th, 2024, to discuss a potential legal matter involving an employee. And the board met in executive session earlier this evening to review tax assessment appeals. At a legal matter involving an employee. Item number three is the report from our students. Welcome, Sophie and Nico. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year and good evening, everyone. I am very devastated that this is my last meeting, but I am going to make sure to give you all the best report I can. To our new board members, welcome, and to our other fellow board members, hello again, and Happy New Year. I will really miss this experience, and of course, Policy Committee as well. But I know that I'm leaving the reports in good hands with Nico. Starting with boys' ice hockey, the boys have had a tremendous start to their season. In the most recent game against WC Henderson, the team won 11-1 with four goals by senior captain Tucker Graham and three by other senior captain Ryan Carr. The team also celebrated their senior night on January 18th at Haverford Stadium, celebrating six seniors. The team will also be competing in the Third Annual Mainline Cup against LM on the outdoor rink. It's a great event for both the boys and the girls, who've also had an impressive season. On Friday, January 5th, the girls took on WC East, crushing them easily with a 15-5 win. A huge shout out goes to Maeve White, who scored seven of the team's 15 goals for the team. The team will also be celebrating their senior night this weekend at PNY Sports Arena with five seniors. Another popular winter sport is wrestling. About a week and a half ago, the wrestling team hosted their annual Cure SMA Night in memory of Peter Henkel. Before the game, the Cure SMA Club also worked to raise money for the foundation, selling donuts, some which even included candy on them, in the main lobby. And I know they raised a lot of money because they even convinced me to buy a donut, and I have since gone dairy-free and couldn't eat it. On Cure SMA Night, the team defeated their league rival, Conestoga, 46-24, and the crowd was ecstatic. Also recently, Radnor Wrestling placed third in the Central League Tournament. Eight members of the team placed, with one junior, Jaden Lee, placing first in his category. The season is still ongoing, but there will be many more medals in the future. On January 13th, the band held their annual Band Ball at Radnor Valley. This has been an ongoing tradition, and it's always one of the many highlights of the year for the band trip, for the band, along with the band trip to Disney. The night featured a lot of dancing and eating, socializing, and more. From the photos, everyone looked like they had a great time, and I always love seeing everyone dress up as well. Speaking of dances, the senior class held their senior semi last Saturday in the RHS lobby. The theme was 24 karat gold, inspired by the year and also their graduation year, 2024. The dance went from 7:30 to 9:30, and everyone had a great time. A special shout out goes to DJ Howard for also playing the senior girls' LM dance music and letting us dance the night away one more time. This was the first dance of the season, but the sophomore semi is in March, early March, and is not far away either. With that, thank you so much for your time today. I just want to say one more thank you for all the amazing opportunities this board has given me. I remember coming into this position, and the room behind me was filled to the brim, and I was standing, little me as a sophomore, with Austin and Sammy terrified to even say, "Hello, my name is Sophie Jubelier, and I'm your new board member." But now, I feel like I am so grateful for what this board has given me, and I've grown so fond of learning about all the new clubs and information at our school that I didn't even know we had. To Mrs. Duffy, Mrs. Dunn, Mrs. Stern, Dr. Babson, and Ms. Solomon, and of course, Mrs. Goldman, Mr. Moore, Mrs. Monahan, and my lovely dad, of course. I've appreciated all that you've done for me and the board. And of course, thank you to Nico, who has been really alongside with me for a good part of this journey and always brought the energy to the reports. I know I'm leaving it in good hands with you, and I'm excited to see what you do in the future. With that, thank you for your time, and I'll pass it over to Nico.
Thank you, Sophie.
Thank you, Sophie. I know that we're all sad that you're leaving. I'll get into that more later. I know it's been a while since we've all seen each other. There's some new faces around, but I'm glad that we're getting back to reports and that midterms are done. With that being said, this past December, Radnor Boys Basketball showcased exceptional dedication and skill, achieving remarkable victories while most were preparing for the holiday season. The team's journey began with a triumphant win against Marple Newtown with a final score of 42-36, thanks to Elijah Sellers' outstanding 14-point game. The winning streak continued as they defeated Strathhaven 63-35, demonstrating formidable defense with 24 steals and a solid halftime lead of 19 points. A nail-biting victory against Springfield further proved the team's resilience, clinching a 45-43 win, close. Despite the holiday break, the boys remained focused, securing a hard-fought win against Episcopal Academy 63-57. The team is looking ahead to the future, and I know their season will be great. Radnor Girls Basketball has demonstrated unwavering commitment through a demanding schedule, including many games and a winter break tournament. The team effortlessly won pre-break games against Marple Newtown, Strathhaven, and Springfield. The highlight came during the 2023 George Sneeer Holiday Tournament, where Radnor Girls Basketball emerged victorious, led by the tournament MVP sophomore Naya. Despite facing challenges against Garnet Valley, Conestoga, and Haverford High School, Radnor Girls Basketball still maintains an impressive record, and I know that they're going to do great things. The Radnor Swimming Team has had an impressive start, defeating Marple Newtown and Lower Merion with standout performances from Ethan Chen and colleague Muk Savage. The team's second-place finish at the Delco Invitational highlighted their potential for the season. Victories over Hererton and others reflected the team's strong momentum as they prepare for future meets. Radnor Girls Swimming has also started off strong, with notable victories against Marple Newtown and Hererton and a closely contested meet against Lower Merion. The team's performance, especially in the 200 medley relay, showcased their competitive edge, and with many swimmers already qualified for centrals, the team is looking forward to their next few meets. Additionally, the Ski and Snowboard Club had a trip to Mount Killington recently, and it was an absolutely unforgettable experience for everybody involved. Students had a blast on the slopes, taking full advantage of the fresh snow and challenging trails that Mount Killington is famous for. From early morning until the lifts closed, the enthusiasm and energy were palpable, and the students pushed their limits and improved their skills. Finally, it saddens me to have to say goodbye to Sophie. Working with you has been outstanding. You've shown me the ropes, taught me so much, and honestly, your drive and dedication have been nothing short of inspiring. I'm really thankful for the time that we've spent working together, and I have to say that Sophie has set the bar really high. Her commitment, her way of getting things done, and just her overall approach to work has taught me so many lessons along the way. Big thank you to Sophie for being such an amazing partner. And the one thing I can say about Sophie is she is definitely not a procrastinator. Whenever we, whenever we have a report, she's always on top of things, eager to share whatever experiences or clubs that she's seen at the school. I've truly enjoyed our last 12 months of working together. Thank you, Sophie, for everything, and thank you, guys.
Thank you both very much. Sophie, don't go anywhere. You're on the agenda again later. Next, we're going to have our report from the superintendent.
Thank you. Good evening, and we'll have a PowerPoint. I think that'll, there we go, it's coming up now. We can go ahead and move to the next slide. I just have a quick couple of slides tonight as part of the superintendent's report. First off, it's School Board Recognition Month, and we do have an opportunity to recognize the board, which I'll share in our agenda in a moment. But I just wanted to take a moment to thank our school board for their dedication. It was interesting when we had the board members who just finished their terms and left the board, and we had a lot of students here, and I had commented that school board members are volunteers. And I had a lot of students comment to me after that. They're like, "Oh, my gosh, Dr. Bachelor, I had no idea they're volunteers," and that they run for this office and volunteer. And it really speaks to all of you, your dedication to the school district, but your dedication to public service, your dedication to give back. The whole community appreciates and values that you take that so seriously. I want to thank our Teachers Association for hosting a dinner earlier. And I think, you know, Mr. King and his words about all that you do for our district is appreciated by so many. So I have an opportunity that I'll share a little bit more with the recognition and read that recognition in a moment. You also have gifts from the admin team. Dr. Wadlick put together the gifts with the principals, and that is something that was produced from our Radnor Middle School, excuse me, technology teacher Wes Robinson. So we just want to thank the board for all that you do. Going on to the next slide. I want to give a quick update just on building the new Ithon Elementary School. We did have a recent meeting where we again invited our community to come to learn about the updates on where we are with Ithon. We'll continue to post on our website updates on Ithon. We are in the point of a planning that we're in the design development phase, where our architect is meeting with teachers, meeting with individual administrators about the design of the plan and factoring in the feedback, whether it's the feedback on the art room, individual classrooms, looking at all the different spaces as we prepare for, you know, completing that final design. We will have an update at our next facilities meeting, the status of the project as well in February. And then going to the next, just upcoming events. Some of our upcoming events between January and February. You know, we're excited about the different events, and especially excited, I mean, there's a lot of great things happening, but I was just really impressed with what I saw at the high school, the speaker series. And so we're looking forward to the speaker series on February 7th and 8th as part of Black History Month. A lot of great events coming moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bachelor. And next, we're going to do a recognition of our retiring student representative, Sophie Jubelier. And Mrs. Duffy asked that she be allowed to give you this, since you two have worked so closely together on the Policy Committee. Now go down and do it. I think that's nicer.
Well, I think there's a lot of sadness in the room here, because I too am sad to see yet another Jubelier leave us. But like your father, you have served us well, and we really appreciate it. And I have no doubt that you are going to continue to make us Radnor proud wherever your journey takes us. So to recognize her service as student representative to the Board of the School Directors and the School Board Policy Committee, the following resolution has been prepared for Sophie Jubelier. Whereas Sophie Jubelier has served the School District of Radnor Township, Delaware County, Pennsylvania from January 2022 until December 2023 as student representative to its Policy Committee. And whereas Sophie Jubelier has also served the School District of Radnor Township, Delaware County, Pennsylvania from January 2023 until December 2023 as student representative to its Board of School Directors. And whereas during that time, she has represented the students of Radnor, presented ideas and positions that have furthered the cause of effective and responsive educational principles and practices within Radnor Township School District. And whereas she has brought to the Board an interest in service to educate and a spirit of cooperation. Now therefore, be it resolved that in appreciation for her service, the members of the Board of School Directors hereby recognize and honor Sophie Jubelier on this 13th day of January, 30th day of January 2024. Thank you and congratulations.
Yeah, I think we can get a picture. Do you want to go out and do it in the lobby with the? Sure.
Why don't you quickly get one picture with her, and then she can get a picture at the end with the parents?
We're big fans of pictures as part of recognition. For people who miss it, Mr. Jubelier is waving goodbye jubilantly. You have to wait till the public comment, period. Thank you.
You know where we are, and you know what time we meet, Mr. Jubelier.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the recognition of services, or service of the RTSD Board of School Directors in honor of School Director Recognition Month. And Mr. Bachelor, Dr. Bachelor really wanted to read this one.
Ken will take this one. So, and also before I read this recognition that we wanted to read into the minutes, I also wanted to, we also have from the admin team, and I want to thank our Communications Department, but also our students that were involved. Since it is International Week, we have plaques you can see below each one of your seats, and it's thanking you in multiple different languages, since it was International Week, and the students put those together. We're giving them to you tonight, but we're going to hold on to them and hang them in the district office for a little while. So, but again, thank you for your service, and I'd like to take a moment to just read this into the minutes. January is School Director Recognition Month in Pennsylvania, a time to recognize the valuable contributions of our school directors who ensure decisions about our schools are made as close as possible to the needs of our community and our children. These individuals serve as volunteers without pay. We thank our current school directors for their achievements and dedicated service in alphabetical order, Andrew Babson, Liz Duffy, Sarah Dunn, Claire Gertin, Janie Lau, Lon Rosenblum, Lydia Solomon, Susan Stern, and DJ Thornton. Public education is the only unit of local government spelled out in the Pennsylvania Constitution which empowers school directors to set policy within the framework of the statutes enacted by the General Assembly. Our school directors clearly demonstrate a desire to serve our community in this unique public service role. Through their dedication to service and local public education, school directors demonstrate a unique commitment to the community's future, our children. The following resolution was adopted on January 18th, 1985, and reaffirmed on November 10th, 2012 by the Board of Directors of the Pennsylvania School Boards Association. Whereas the role of locally-elected school officials have served the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and local communities in meeting the needs of public education since the passage of the Free School Act in 1834. And whereas these local boards have discharged their responsibilities to public education in a manner which has placed public education in the forefront of our educational systems. And whereas locally-elected officials have distinguished themselves and their communities in this non-paid volunteer public service commitment. Boy, we really emphasized the non-paid tonight, huh? Just in case you didn't know what you signed up for. Whereas the contributions of these men and women should be recognized and appreciated by those who benefit from the workings of our public school system. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Directors of the Pennsylvania School Boards Association hereby proclaims the month of January as School Director Recognition Month in this Commonwealth, and further resolve that this proclamation be communicated to all school districts, school officials, and local communities in a planned program which brings visibility and awareness of the role of locally-elected school officials to the citizenry of this Commonwealth. And again, just on behalf of our district, just thank you. We truly appreciate not only your willingness to serve, but your commitment, your commitment to the students and commitment to the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's nice to work in such a nice, nice school district. Easy to work with all of you. The next item on the agenda is public comment. I'm not seeing any in the audience. We don't have any recorded, so we will move on to the next agenda item. If there is public comment, it can be made in person at the end of the meeting. Report from board committees. First item on that agenda is Curriculum Committee. Dr. Babson?
Okay. All right. Good evening, everyone. So during our last curriculum committee meeting, we had a pretty full agenda. We had updates on the program of studies at the secondary level from the middle school and the high school. And so the middle school program of studies was updated. And also, there was an additional report on the integrated program and other offerings at the middle school. And at the high school level, there was also some discussion of the integrated program as well. And then finally, the meeting was wrapped up with a discussion of the STEELs standards. And STEEL stands for, it's an acronym, stands for Science, Technology, and Engineering, and Environmental Literacy, and Sustainability. Got that? STEELs standards. And also, there was a discussion about how the Innovative Design Studio, IDS, would going forward be kind of a win-win for providing some curricular, let's say, innovation, but also meeting new standards, the new standards in a productive way. And that is it for our curriculum committee report.
Thank you. Next on the docket is facilities. Mrs. Duffy?
The Facilities Committee did not meet in January. However, we did have a special board meeting on Tuesday, January 9th, to address a facility matter, which was the administration and Breslin Architect and Site Logic gave us an update on the Ithon design. And essentially, it was that they were coming forth recommending that we not proceed with the Radnor, I mean, the Ithon one-way access road to Roberts Road and the facilities, the maintenance department at Ithon, which would be, if we had proceeded with it, it would be moving over from the high school. And so that was just an update, and our next facility meeting is on Tuesday, February 13th at 7:00 p.m.
Thank you. Finance, Mrs. Solomon.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening. The Finance Committee met on January 9th as well. We reviewed the action items that you'll find on your agenda tonight, which include the monthly financial statements, the settlement agreement with the Valley Forge Military Academy, the approval of an additional depository to Mark Financial Credit Union, and four generous donations to the schools. And just a special thank you to the people who've donated to the schools. It's greatly appreciated. Then we had a discussion of the fund balance commitment, which I believe we're going to hear more about under the priority action items for tonight. And we had a budget update. And I think everyone has received their draft audit report. We did not have that at the time of the meeting, but you have it now in your packets. So those were the items from the Finance Committee. We will meet again on February 6th at 5:00 p.m.
Thank you, Mrs. Solomon. Next is the Policy Committee. Mrs. Stern?
Thank you. The Policy Committee met Tuesday, January 9th. On tonight's consent agenda, you'll see three policies for second read. That would be school day visitors, public attendance at school events, and home education, which is also commonly known as homeschooling. Those policies are up for second read and adoption tonight. We did have a, we intended to have a first read of volunteers, but we're going to bring that back to the committee and discuss that again at the February, at the February Policy Committee meeting, which will be next Tuesday, February 6th, where we will also begin our discussion of the homework policy. There's been a homework committee, and now we'll have our draft and first read of the homework policy. So that's our, that's the work.
Thank you. Last item is the Government Relations and Communications Committee meeting. We did not meet in January. We will meet next Tuesday, February 6th, at the Administrative Building. At this point, we usually ask if anybody has any other community comments or notifications they wanted to provide, but nobody gave me a heads up, so we're going to move on. Priority action, priority discussion and action items. The first item we're going to discuss this evening is the approval of the commitment of the 2022-2023 fund balances. And the recommended action is that the board approves the general fund balance commitments for the year ended June 30th, 2023. And there's actually an entire chart of allocations that the administration is recommending that the board follow or approve this allocation of general fund balance, sorry, general fund fund balance commitments for the year ended June 30th, 2023. And at this point, to give more color to all of that, I'm going to ask Mr. Pauling to come up and speak with us. Good evening, Mr. Pauling. Welcome.
Good evening. It's always weird when you read general fund fund balance. It always, word always flags that as a typo as well. But so the two items that we have for the priority action tonight kind of go together. It's kind of the culmination of our 2022-23 fiscal year. And so I'll just talk briefly about the fund balance commitments. As Miss Solomon said, we did discuss it at the Finance Committee meeting. So in conjunction with the audit, once we wrap up the fiscal year, we make recommended fund balance commitments, and committed fund balances are required to have board action to commit those monies within those fund balances. So we're presenting those this evening. And I'll just talk briefly about the fund balances in general. So we do have a bucket of fund balance, which is labeled unassigned. And per our regulations, we can have no more than 8% of our fund balance as an unassigned fund balance. So the amount that's listed of $9,198,466 million is just 7.99% of our current year's expenditure budget. So we are under that 8%. And then the rest of the fund balances are committed, which would require the board action this evening. We've allocated $14.1 million for capital projects, $1 million for retirement rate stabilization. And what we've done this year is, because of the retirement rates having stabilized and actually have shown now two years of slight decreases, we recommended moving $2.5 million of that over to the capital projects fund balance commitments. And as we'll be talking about as a preview in our upcoming facilities meeting, you know, we have some upcoming projects in our five-to-10-year plan that we plan on utilizing those resources for, as well as what we have in our capital reserve balances as well. And then we have a little under $800,000 for long-term early retirement incentives. We keep that in our fund balance for those commitments should they come due. And then just under $8 million in curriculum and technology initiatives for the cyclical nature of things that come up within both of those areas. So total, our fund balances for the year ended at $33,172, 172 and 6, $33,172,611. So those are our fund balances that we are recommending for approval this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pauling. And I do know there were questions at the Finance Committee meeting. Does anybody have any questions or comments this evening? Your explanations were exquisite.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Mrs. Stern and a second from Mrs. Duffy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I think that passes nine to zero. Thank you very much. Don't go anywhere.
I won't.
The next item is the approval of the 2022-23 draft audit report. And on this one, the recommended action is that the board accepts the draft audit report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2023, as prepared by BBD LLP Certified Public Accountants. There's a summary here, but I think you'll probably do it better justice than me just reading it.
So again, this audit report is the culmination of our prior fiscal year. We really start this audit process prior to the end of the fiscal year. We work with our auditors, BBD, to do some initial testing, and then they're onsite in the fall, usually September, to do further testing. We are late with this this year. This is probably the last time I can blame the software conversion on something, but it really made a lot of the processes more challenging this year because of having to navigate between a full fiscal year and the old software and transitioning over to the new year. So just want to thank BBD and our staff with navigating all of that this year. We usually try to get this wrapped up sooner. So, but we have it ready to go tonight. Really, when I get this, there's two things I'm looking for, and I probably have a preview of this. But page one, the first page, what I'm looking for is the opinion that we're getting from BBD of how the financial statements are presented. And BBD will never 100- And BBD will never 100% say that everything in these audit statements are accurate, but what they're doing is they're giving a, an opinion of whether or not the financial statements are presented fairly in all of our different activities and according to the governmental accounting principles that were required to follow. And on the first page and the second paragraph, they are presenting an unmodified opinion. So that's a great result for us, that we had no audit findings in regards to that. The other thing is the last page. That is a summary that they put together that talks about any further findings or questions that they may have had. And in all cases, they found no significant deficiencies, no instances of noncompliance, and everything in their opinion was prepared in accordance with those governmental accounting practices or general accounting practices. So I would just like to thank, first, my staff. This is the culmination of the entire year. This isn't just, the auditors are here, let's scramble to do everything. This is what we do every day, leads up to the end result. And so, big thanks to my staff in the business office, especially to our Assistant Business Director, Missy Klaus, who's here. She takes the lead on the audit and does a phenomenal job. Really, it's first, her first audit here at Radnor. So combine that with a financial software conversion and a new payroll person this summer, and we had a lot on our plate. And she did a phenomenal job with navigating us through that along with BBD. So I just want to commend everybody that was involved. We do have Michael Mood from BBD here. I'm going to turn it over to him, just to give a little overview of the financial statements, talk a little bit about the process, and then just explain why we have a draft audit tonight. We should have the final audit within the next few days, but there were just a couple things that we needed to wrap up to make sure that they can attest that everything is finalized. Won't change anything materially is what we're presenting tonight, but I'll let him talk about that, and I'll have him come up. And if you have any questions for either of us, then we'd be happy to answer.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
Yeah, so as Brian mentioned, this is a draft. Again, it goes through quality control on our end. Lots of different people are reviewing, making sure, you know, everything that's required to be in here is included, you know, edit checks, you know, back and forth. So that, that's getting finalized. Hopefully, we can get this final with, like you said, within the next day or so. That's the intent. And, and then, they can, you know, you can issue your report to Emma for continuing disclosure requirements and get that, you know, published out so that everybody can see the final version. As Brian stated, there, there was definitely some challenges, and that's why we're here in January instead of, you know, a couple months ago, like we typically would be. You know, Brian, Missy, the rest of the staff did a great job, as he noted, in terms of navigating the challenges associated with that. It, it does present a lot of difficulties in terms of what we're asking for, the volume of information going back and forth between multiple systems in order to do so. So I do appreciate their efforts, you know, making our lives as easy as possible, trying to do that and get through this, you know, as timely as possible. I'm going to go over just kind of an overview. I understand there's some new board members as well, so I'll try to hit some highlights, kind of point you in the direction of where I would look in terms of this larger report, you know, if you want to kind of get a more abbreviated version of it. So, so as he stated, you know, the first three pages is the independent auditor's report. I mean, that's, that's the core of this. That's what you want to see. The opinion was unmodified or a clean opinion, you know, it's the best, you know, that you can receive. It also outlines, within this report, within these three pages, it outlines management's responsibility, which is to prepare the financial statements in accordance with GAAP. It outlines our responsibilities as auditors, which is to audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, as well as government auditing standards, and making sure that the information is materially accurate in accordance with GAAP. On this first page, it also outlines a new accounting principle that was implemented during the year, which was Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 96. It's effectively capturing your subscription-based agreements, you know, for software in the same way as you would report a lease that was implemented in the prior year. So it's, it's, it's trying to capture the, the future payments that you're going to see in your financial statements, as opposed to just expensing them each year and just trying to give the, the users of your financial statements a little bit more information, a little bit more clearer picture of your, your future obligations. So, so that's also included, that change in accounting principle in this, in this report. So that's the first few pages. I'm going to bounce around a little bit. What I like to do is go over what the Board mostly tends to look at as the budgetary comparison, which is preparing your budget to actual reports. That's on page 53 of your report. So here, you'll see your original and final budgets in comparison with the actual results. I'll go over a couple of those, those variances. You'll see, overall, you had a net change in fund balance of about $1.8 million. That brought your fund balance at the end of the year to just over $33 million. Most of that change was the result of a positive variance in your revenues. So your local source revenues were just over $3.2 million better than budget. Most of that resulted in higher-than-anticipated real estate tax collections, as well as investment earnings that were in excess of budget. So the investment earnings were about $1.5 million more than budget. We've seen this across, you know, the state in all of our school districts budgeting. At the time that, that the budgeting was being complete, obviously, interest rates weren't, weren't what they, what they are now and what they were expected to be. So there's been a huge positive variance there for, for almost everyone. On the expenditure side, you know, there's, there's some, you know, positives, some negatives. Instruction was just a little bit higher than budget. Support services was a little bit less than budget. But overall, like I said, the, the change versus budget was about $2.4 million better. You expected to use about $600,000 of fund balance, and you had a positive change in fund balance of just over $1.8 million. That also includes a $3 million transfer that was made to your capital reserve fund because of the positive variance that you had in some of the other, in some of the other areas. You discussed the fund balance. So if you can turn to page 18, you'll see the balance sheet for your governmental funds. Here, you'll see the fund balances for, for your general fund, capital projects funds, as well as your other major and non-major governmental funds. So as presented earlier for your consideration was the commitments to fund balance, those commitments are reflected in this draft that you just approved. They leave you with an unassigned fund balance of just under 8% of next year's budget, which is, again, within PDE guidelines and your, and the Board policy to maintain an unassigned fund balance between 5 and 8% of the next year's budget. You also have just over $9 million of fund balance that's restricted for capital projects related to your capital projects fund that's shown here as well. So that's where you stand at the end of the year. That fund-level statement is prepared on a modified accrual basis. So you have two different sets of financial statements here. You have a fund-level statement and governmental statements. So on pages 16 and 17, these are your government-wide statements. This presents a full accrual basis of accounting, again, trying to capture some of those, you know, future outlays. So the, the major difference between your fund-level statements that you're looking at and these full accrual statements is the capturing of capital assets as well as long-term liabilities. So here, you'll see you have capital assets on your governmental funds of about $105 million. You have future long-term liabilities of, you know, over $200 million. Some of that's related to your general obligation debts. A big portion of that's related to your future payments related to the Peasars pension and OPEB liabilities as well. So I'll direct you in a, in a few moments to the footnote that captures some of that information. But between your fund level and your government-wide statements, there are reconciliations on pages 19 and 21 that show you how to get from the current financial resource measurement focus, which is your modified accrual basis, at the fund level to your entity-wide statements. That, that shows you how you, the differences between those two, which is, you know, probably what you're seeing throughout the year when you're looking at monthly reports. You're seeing a current measurement focus versus these government-wide statements that are capturing some of these long-term assets and liabilities. On page 37, that's where you'll see those long-term liabilities outlined in a, in a table format. So you'll see you had about 98, almost $99 million of general obligation debt at the end of the year, and you had a net pension liability of about $138 million for your allocable proportion of that Peasars pension liability. Your general obligation debt-
I'm sorry, could you just say that number again? The 138?
It's 138.8 roughly. So that, that increased by about $10.8 million during this current fiscal year. That changes year after year depending on changes in certain, if your payroll goes up or down, like that's essentially what's being, how it's being allocated across the state is your covered payroll versus the, the entire plan. But as, you know, investments perform better, as different assumptions are built into that change, the actuaries that prepare the, the future liability calculations, that's, that's what's built into this. So you, you generally see, you know, huge fluctuations year to year depending on how the, the plan is performing, as well as, you know, changes in payroll across, not just here, but across, you know, the other governments throughout the state. The general obligation debt-
Mike, I'm sorry.
Sure.
I just, so, when that, that, that change happened, I forget, seven, six, seven years ago, where we had to start reporting that?
Yeah, it was about seven or eight years ago, yeah.
So just, it's, and when we, when it first happened, you know, of course, it vastly changed what our audits looked like.
Sure.
People who casually look at our audits a couple of years ago made the comment, we were in debt to the tune of-
Sure.
$250 million. But really, it's almost imagining if we had to pay every employee's, their entire pension tomorrow, like, which of course, we don't.
Correct.
But that's, but they're making us report it that way, and that's why the number is so big.
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, and, and over time, like you said, it should, the intent of your contribution rate, right now, it's 34% that gets paid into the plan. You know, that number has, as this was implemented, has increased substantially over time. It's now leveled out some, but the expectation is that, you know, if you continue to contribute at that rate, and, you know, obviously, there's a lot of assumptions built into that, but, you know, back in 2019, I guess it was now, they, you know, moved from the defined benefit plan to a defined contribution, which is helping alleviate some of those future liabilities with changes in different plans that Peasars offers. So, you know, they are evaluating ways to, to, you know, kind of minimize this liability as it moves forward, so.
Is that for new employees, or are they-
For, for new employees. So employees that entered, I think, subsequent to July 1, 2019, it changed to a different plan type.
Fully different plan? Wow.
Getting back to the, the debt, so on page 38, it outlines all of the general obligation debt, which we, we noted was about $94 million. So you'll see the general obligation bonds and notes that are outlined here. There was a couple, you know, new issuances that occurred during the fiscal year that are included here. So that $94 million is also within your debt limitation. So debt limitation is, is calculated based on, you know, a three-year average. It's basically 225% of your three-year average of your, of your governmental revenues. So that debt limit was about $245 million. So obviously, you're nowhere near, you know, approaching that limit as you evaluate future capital projects. And you'll see on page 39, you can kind of see your future payment schedules laid out. It has each of the next five years and then each five-year grouping thereafter. So your debt service as of the, at this point in time, as of June 30th, was about $7.9 million per year is what you're paying in debt service. I know that should have changed lately when you had a, I think you had a debt issuance that we disclosed in here as well that happened, occurred in November, I believe, which was an issuance of another nine or so million dollars in debt. But sometimes, it's good for the Board to kind of see that, those, what those future outlays are. Like I said, it's roughly $7.9 million a year. And then, I'll point you again to the last page, and Brian covered this briefly, the summary of audit results in question costs on page 69, which is the final page of the report. This is also included because we performed a single audit, which is on your federal expenditures. So because you expend more than $750,000 in federal expenditures, a separate single audit's required, whereby we test major programs based on certain thresholds that are established by the Uniform Guidance issued by the, by OMB. We had to audit your education stabilization fund, your ESER funds, some of the ARP money that was expended during the year, which was about roughly $1.2 million, was audited as a major program. We evaluate, evaluated internal controls. We evaluated internal controls over compliance, and compliance that was subject to audit and found no issues with, with any of that. Internal controls operated properly. There was no instances of noncompliance. We issued, you know, an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, as well as on our audit over your major program here. So there's about $3.2 million roughly of federal expenditures in total. What we audit as major is, again, defined by the OMB, and that changes year to year. If you continue to have spending in 2024 of ESER funding, you know, that may have to be audited again as major, but it rotates. You know, typically, we'll audit special education funding with IDEA. It just depends on, you know, what you're spending your federal funds on at any given point in time. So that's a highlight of, of what happened during the year. Be happy to answer any other questions you might have, but overall, like I said, it's, you know, good working with, you know, the staff and helped us, you know, tremendously navigating some of those challenges that, that we discussed. And look forward to getting this wrapped up and off of your plate, so.
Thanks, Mike. I appreciate it. Anybody have any comments or questions? Mrs. Solomon?
I have a question in your summary narrative. Can you just talk about, you say there's a deficiency in internal control over compliance. Can you explain what you're talking about here exactly?
Mrs. Solomon, can you point to the page just-
This is on page 67. Report on internal control over compliance. It's actually mentioned twice. It's mentioned somewhere else, too, in the summary. Can you just explain what you're talking about? I'm not clear.
Yeah, so there aren't any deficiencies in compliance. It's probably just the, it's probably confusing wording that's required. If that, if there is a mistake in there, I certainly can, can review and, and adjust that. There are no instances of noncompliance or internal controls. What, what those letters are doing are trying to define what a significant deficiency and a material weakness are, and establishing the, the wording associated with. The fact that we can't guarantee that everything will be found, but based off of our testing, we did not identify any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses.
So you're saying there's no deficiencies, but you're giving a disclaimer that you maybe didn't catch them? Or what, what are you actually saying here?
Yes, yes. So, so there's always that, because we aren't looking at every single transaction. So, and, and audit is a risk-based approach where we're trying to identify the most risky areas, and those are established by, you know, governing bodies, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. So realistically, we are looking at significantly, you know, most of those expenditures, but we can't give a carte blanche statement that says there is nothing here that is inaccurate or incorrect because we aren't looking at every single transaction.
Got it. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody else? Mrs. Dunn? Am I, sorry, Mrs. Stern? I have a question, too, but you go first.
Thank you. So, page 53, the general fund, the budget.
Yep.
And this actually might be something that, you know, normally, we do this in the Finance Committee meeting, so I apologize, but we just didn't have it there to do. You, you said something, and I just want to make sure I can find it in here.
Okay.
In a minute, I'll ask you that, but, so under expenditures, special programs, does that mean special education, or are you lumping together a whole series of things where you say special programs? Because it looks like we were about $400,000 over budget.
That's special education, yes.
Okay, so I know where I'll follow up on that. And then, other instructional programs, and I may need Mr. Pauling, we're also about $250,000 over, I think we're over budget there. Yeah, $250,000 over budget.
Yes.
What would that, is that something that I should follow with Mr. Pauling?
Yeah, sure.
So those are additional things outside of the programming. So off the top of my head, I believe it had, was related to a portion of expenditures that we implemented for after-school programs, things related to federal funding, that we received additional money- received additional money for. So if it was summer, not summer school, but after-school programming and things of that nature, we didn't budget for those federal expenditures in that line item in full. They were budgeted in a reserve account, but the expenditures are recorded there for the year. So some of that money that we received from the state that we have defined purposes for, that's where they were expensed in that category. So that's where the variance comes from.
Okay, and then with regard to special ed, this $430,000 is not taking into account the change that, I'm going to just kind of look at, this doesn't even include the change that we have for this year with the PDE change to the 22-year-old services.
Correct.
This is something that happened prior to that?
Yes, because this was, since it was prior year, it wasn't enacted until this current year. Yep.
Okay, great. And then we actually got $450,000 less from the state than we anticipated? Was there a particular reason?
It's fluid because, remember, part of that is our 50% reimbursement for social security and pension. So some of them are pretty well-defined. Our basic ed, special ed subsidies vary a little bit, but there is some fluctuation. Our transportation subsidy can fluctuate based on our reported vehicle mileage, age of vehicle. So in some of the state line items, they're pretty static, and some, there is some variance in there. So it's not out of the ordinary for something like this. This wouldn't be a significant variance based on what we would have budgeted and anticipated salaries, you know, with the pension rate versus where our salaries landed and then what our reimbursement was as part of that.
Okay, great. And then, and I'm just trying to find it, the page that is the fund balance that we did a minute ago. I just can't find which page it's on.
Is it 19?
17, 18?
18, page 18.
Okay, 18. So, so you made a comment, and I think I referenced this at the finance committee meeting, about just wanting to keep track which capital fund we were talking about, where and when? Because you made mention of making a $3 million transfer into capital, and then we also made the $2.5 million from Peasars into capital. So just walk me through which one was which, which was Fund 32, which was Fund 10, and where did the money from Peasars, the $2.5 from Peasars that's in Fund 10, went right back into committed in Fund 10?
Right. So that two, that two and a half million that we moved, the early retirement rate stabilization at the 1.087 million, that was 3.5-
Wait a second. Which page did you say?
On page 18.
18, I'm looking at 16, sorry.
No problem.
1.08 million?
Yep.
I thought it was 2.5.
So we transferred 2.5. So there's a million left. The beginning balance at the beginning of the year was 3.5 million. We transferred 2.5 up to the committed capital projects, the 14.1. So we shifted 2.5 million from the employer retirement rate stabilization. It is included in that 14 million.
Right.
The other 3 million that we transferred to the capital reserve fund, that is reflected in, on page 18, in the restricted-for-capital projects under the capital projects fund, the $9,340,696. That's inclusive of that 3 million that we transferred.
Wait, say that again. Are you saying the 2996931?
In, on page 18, major funds, capital projects fund column, the $9,340,696. It's reflected in there, and then if you look on page 20.
18, hold on a second. 19, 20, yep, go ahead.
Okay, so this is the income statement. So if you look under capital projects fund, you see where it says transfers in $4,575,000. We budgeted $1,575,000, which was for a budgeted $1 million transfer, and then $575,000 budgeted for buses. And then the additional $3 million is included in that. So that brings it up to the total of $4,575,000. So that's where it's reflected as a revenue, as a transfer in for the capital projects fund.
Right, but where did the transfer in of 3 million come from?
From the general fund. So it's actually included in the, it's included as an expense in the general fund.
Yeah, where, that's what, I'm sorry, that's what I want to know, is where on the, on the budget page, which I already, now I already forgot what page it was.
It's in transfers out at the bottom.
Yeah.
Right, so, I'm sorry, what page is the?
53.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's what I wanted to, that's what my real question was.
Yeah, so you'll see it on there when you turn to it. So we had a budget of $1,620,000 for transfers out. The actual was $4,830,000. So that's where you see that variance. It's a little under 3.5 million because we adjusted some of our transfers, what we call due-to-do-from transfers.
So this is the 3 million, thank you.
Yeah, but it's included in there.
3 million to Fund 32.
Yep, so it shows as an expense in the general fund and as a revenue in the capital projects.
No, that I knew. I just wanted to see where you put it.
Yep.
Thank you. That was all my, that's all my question.
Sure.
Anybody else? Okay, I did have one question, and it's much simpler, and not to pick on you guys, does this mean you have to, I mean, are we going to get next year's budget, or, not budget, next year's audit that much sooner so you have a shorter time, or is-
Yes.
Next year, we should expect a little delay as well?
No, it will be on time next year.
That wasn't a criticism. I genuinely wanted to know because I know it's a stress for the team.
We've already talked about it, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so our goal has been, like, if we can present this in November, that's been our goal, and which is what we hit last year.
Yes.
So that's our goal for this year.
Great.
Yep.
Thank you, Missy. Thank you both.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the, I'm sorry, oh, we have to, we have to vote on this. Yes. May I have a motion to approve, accept the draft audit?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Mrs. Solomon and a second from Mrs. Stern. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
I think that passes nine to zero. Okay, next item on the agenda is consent agenda. And though, although board action is required, it's generally unnecessary to hold discussion on all the following items. So with the consent of all the board members, they're grouped together, and approval is given in one motion. In the event any of the board members wants to discuss any of these items, I will move it to an appropriate place on the agenda. Does anyone have anything they wanted to pull from the consent agenda? Okay, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Mrs. Solomon and a second from Mrs. Duffy. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Again, I think I have nine to zero. Okay, moving right along. I think the, I gotta clip these pages next time. Next item on the agenda is item 16, Reports from Board Liaisons on Community Announcements. Delaware County Community College. Mrs. Solomon?
No, no report.
Okay. Delaware County Intermediate Unit. Dr. Babson?
I do have a brief report. It's two bits of news, of many bits of news that I could have chosen from, but two pretty interesting bits of news. So the DCIU is moving ahead with the land development phase of a project for the Marple Education Campus of the DCIU. And also, the DCIU Practical Nursing Program has been officially recognized with full approval status from the Pennsylvania State Board of Nursing, which is another nice piece of news. And that's it.
Dr. Babson, what degree will that be, that practical nurse? Will it be an LPN?
It's an LPN.
It's an LPN program?
I think so.
Licensed practical nurse, right?
I think it's a one-year LPN.
I believe that is correct.
Great, thank you.
But I can get back to you on that.
No, 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 that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
That is great news. Would you not have a report from the Delaware County School Board's Legislative Council? PSBA, Mr. Thornton, do you have anything to report?
No, we have this one.
Okay. I think in the next couple of months, we should get a notice from them about the platform committees. So just be on the lookout for that. That's something that people can volunteer to serve on if they'd like, and I'm happy to talk to people more about it if they have questions. Last item is board announcements. We have meetings on February 6th, as people mentioned earlier, for the Finance Policy and Government Relations and Communications Committees. We also have committee meetings on February 23rd for both the Curriculum and Facilities Committees. And then on, and both, on February 20th, we have our regular business meeting, and all of those apparently will be on the ground floor, in the ground floor conference room in the administrative building. So just in case anyone was missing that, our school board meeting on the 20th will not be in this building. It will be in the administrative building in downtown Wayne.
Can I make a community announcement?
Please.
We have two fundraisers coming up in the community. The Radnor Educational Foundation is having their annual gala fundraiser on February, on Saturday, February 24th. And then the ABC, the Radnor Better Chance House, is going to have their soiree, they're calling it, on Friday, April 19th. So they'll be in, I think it's already hit the Radnor reader, but mark your calendars, please.
Yeah, no, that's great opportunities. Last item is public comment, and since there's nobody here from the public, I'm going to assume we have no public comment. So may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I have a motion from Mrs. Solomon. Second?
Second.
It's usually erased to do the second.
From Mr. Bab, Dr. Babson. And then the last item, can we, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Again, nine, zero. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.